Call to order this Oak Island Planning Board Meeting, February 15th, 2024. If we will stand and set the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, welcome everyone and ones viewing on the TV. Thank you. Next agenda is adjustment and approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to revise the agenda and move I dot three to the first item of all business to continue the review of table of uses and supplemental regulations as our first item of all business this morning.
I have a second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, we will move three to...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear if Gene responded, that he was all in favor of that as well.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Set three or two? Two.
Review of table of uses becomes I dot one. And then I would suggest that we make the decision for staff on the discussion of planning board meeting dates and then save the discussion of off-premise signage to I dot three, to the third item of all business. So that's my motion.
That we just wrote it on.
Just to be clear.
Okay. That will be new business.
So I'm making, if, may I, if I may, make a motion to approve the minutes as revised?
Of the agenda as revised?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Second.
All in favor? Gene?
Can we see Gene?
Yeah, we should be able to see Gene on the screen.
We cannot see Gene.
Might be some transmittal issues from his side. He may be computing, there he is.
Thank you.
Apologize.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, that will put us on what, which page?
Page.
Twenty-five. And twenty-five. So you're looking at childcare facilities.
Mr. Chair, we should at least call through the other two agenda items, approval of minutes and public comment, even if we don't have any.
Okay. Any public comment?
Seeing none.
None, we will forego that. Approval, approval of the minutes, nope, not yet.
Not today.
Not today, no minutes.
No minutes for approval.
Done, public comment done. Okay, sign ordinance. It's down.
We go to review of table of uses on page twenty-five.
Okay. Carrie, would you like to start with your suggestions?
I think what may be beneficial is to, I guess I have a question. So Matt, as I, as I went through looking at these supplemental regulations, I see that you've made suggested revisions. Was there a particular order that you undertook this, or was this, because you know, just for our numerers of the planning board, the priorities were, we went through the table of uses, we, we added supplemental regulations to some uses. And so the priority was to go through the, the ones where we needed new regulations before we revised the ones that had existing. Is that what we did here in this, in this particular packet? Because it looked to me like maybe you were going in a, in a certain order through the, through Article seven. Just help, help us understand before we get into the detail real quick.
Hang on, let me get my computer going here, trying to update me all day. Yeah, so actually two things here. On page thirty-seven is the start of things that didn't have supplemental regulations and they're in the order of the table. While I was doing that, since I had a little bit of additional time, I also went ahead and looked at some of the existing regulations to see if there was any tweaks or adjustments we needed to make there. So if you guys want to focus on items that don't have supplemental regulations already as a part of this discussion, you'd start with seven dot X laboratories for research and testing on page thirty-seven of your agenda packet. And the rest, everything before that is suggested amendments to current regulations. And really like, what we're, what I'm trying to do is, is go down the table of uses and add things that we need to add. And while I'm at it, if I have time, do those, do a review of the existing supplemental regulations so that you've, you've got it if you want to look at it. So really kind of doubling up on that as far as the staff workload goes, so.
Yeah.
I apologize if I, David, before the meeting, I'm dealing with a medical issue, so if I seem a little loopy today, it's medication that guys got me on, so.
I, I think, I think what council has suggested that we do is move through this and get it completed. And, and where we don't have supplemental regulations where they need to be, I think those should be our first priorities to address. Instead of, you know, and then getting down, I guess downstream further, we would start looking at revising existing regulations that are already there. So in that regard, how do we go through this today, hitting just the ones that are new regulations?
You can start on page thirty-seven, that's seven dot X.
Yeah, that's your seven X.
All right.
And these don't have numbers, so let's make sure we're calling out the uses because until we get through all this, then I'll reorder it to make sure that it's in the right subsection.
Okay, so, so on laboratories, I mean, maybe we take these individually, Mr. Chair, and go across the table for each one. So seven X laboratories for research, I'll be happy to start. I, I see the changes here, I'm just wondering if these are sufficient or there's, do we need any environmental disposal regulations around laboratories for research and testing, would be my question. I'm not trying to throw out any additional text, other than to say, it seems to me that this type of use would need environmental disposal regulations. That would be my comment for that.
Would that be covered by state regs?
So typically hazardous waste disposal is, unless you want to screen it or, you know, enclose it in some way or something like that, that's usually handled via the people who actually dispose of the, of the materials and those environmental regulations as well. What's in here for laboratories for research and testing pretty closely mirrors what we recommended for light manufacturing, because they're similar uses in a lot of regards. Not quite the same. But if there are certain impacts, you know, certainly let us know that you're looking to deal with. And we'll see if there's anything we can do regulatory wise to, to beef those up for sure.
Yeah, it just seems to me that a laboratory is going to have certain chemicals that would need to certainly have some type of regulations around them for public safety reasons, it would seem like. But Matt, certainly I'm not the expert, so.
I can look into.
If you can see, if you could bring something back, that would be my, that would be my suggestion or request on this item. I don't know if Mr. Gilbert has.
I do not.
Okay. Melanie?
Melanie?
Just with that one?
Okay. Honestly, I think a lot of these are general, like Matt said, it's small manufacturing. You have the shade trees, you have the shrubs, the setbacks, stormwater. The only thing I would worry about is flood areas.
Yeah, I can touch on that briefly. We can, there's a couple of tags you could take as far as flood development regulations go. Anything in the flood hazard area has higher development standards, just by virtue of being in a special flood hazard area on the map. You can, through your U D O, if you want to keep certain uses out of the special flood hazard area, you can, you can do that. You can say, hey, this can't be located in the special flood hazard area. And that's just a simple one line we could put in there if that's the board's intention, there's, and certainly there's
I would like to see that.
Some uses that are not appropriate for the special flood hazard area.
That was my only comment on that. Coliseum stadiums designed to accommodate more than a thousand people. Daryl?
I don't have any comment.
Carrie?
Again, appreciate what's here, only question was things like required parking, ingress and regress, those types of things, ingress and egress, I always get that confused. Is, is that something that needs to be included in regulations around something that would accommodate more than one thousand people? I mean, it's not such a big challenge for us, but it could be at some point.
Yeah, we have, our current ordinance deals with parking and access through our performance standards.
Okay.
And we actually have a couple of different ways that we can look at these types of uses for parking specifically. It's either based, let me pull this up. We can base it on the number of fixed seats, the number of the square footage of the parcel area, gross floor area. So they're typically in a, an outdoor type of space, like if it was a, you know, thousand person stadium, you'd probably look at the parcel area for the, the required parking, because you're looking at, you know, you're going to have a lot of empty space and a lot of seats jammed into, to smaller areas.
Right.
But yeah, we, we certainly do have some, some parking requirements that in my experience are pretty high as far as what we require for parking. I've certainly seen plenty of jurisdictions that have, require a much lower amount than what we require for parking.
So do we need anything here, or is that covered elsewhere in the, in the ordinance?
Yes, it's covered under Article ten, Part three, covers off-street parking and loading. Also covers driveway and access requirements.
Okay.
And typically with a, with a facility like this, the highest likelihood is that it's going to be located off of a state road.
Yes.
So DOT will get involved with the access management. They're the ones who would, if, if the use requires a turn lane or something like that, in order to be serviced appropriately, that would go through DOT instead of the town, if it's located on a state road.
And the same for things like restroom facilities and all those types of things for public safety?
Restrooms are actually covered by building code, so like the required amount of restrooms for a, a type of use and how many are accessible, things like that, get covered under the building code.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
So would this also require a definition? We don't, I mean, coliseum, we don't really refer to anything, we haven't defined what that technically is.
Yeah, we can, I think that's one of the things we've marked as being a definition, I can double check on that for you. But anything that we've marked with the definitions, I'm going through and trying to build them as we go.
Okay.
For sure, so anything that's not in there now that we've marked for a definition, I've got it on my list of
Got it, okay.
Things to add as we continue these reviews.
Okay. Community centers.
And I, oh, these next two, I really struggled, I'll kind of kick this one off, to figure out what type of impacts we were trying to mitigate with, by supplemental standards. So definitely any suggestions you have as far as what we're trying to, you know, get at with these particular uses and adding supplemental regulations to them, that would help me out with what type of regulations to develop around these.
Could community center be similar to low manufacturing?
Um, you know, well, I'm pretty sure we have a definition for community centers in our ordinance, spare room in just a second here. You certainly could, I, I think it would depend on the scale of the community center, right? Like.
Yeah, community center, a land or building owned and operated by the town or a nonprofit such as a church, Y M C A, or civic organization.
Actually, we do have a, a private community center definition in here.
Yep.
For beach clubs, commandant clubs, property owners associations. So certainly we could look at adding some lighting buffering standards, things like that for the private ones versus the public ones. Is that?
Yes.
I'm seeing some nodding heads.
Okay.
Yeah, I can definitely come back to you with that.
And golf courses, Matt?
Kind of the same thing, I was a little curious as far as what type of, you know, impacts we were looking to mitigate by adding supplemental regulations. You know, they're typically wide open green spaces.
Pervious spaces, everything, everything we want, everything we want.
So we could certainly, you know, just thinking off the top of my head, one thing you might could do is have a minimum size requirement. So you have to have X amount of acres to develop a golf course, that's just something off the top of my head.
Absolutely, yep.
So that we don't have somebody trying to plug in a really small, you know, and say, oh, it's not mini golf, it's a golf course.
Is a clubhouse a part of a golf course, or is that a secondary structure?
If it's associated just solely with the golf course, it would be incidental to the golf course. So we'd look at the golf course as the primary use and the clubhouse as a part of that use.
And then you've also got, usually there's maintenance equipment, things like that associated with the golf course.
You could put in screening for something like that, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, wouldn't there be certain setback in proximity to residential, things like that also for?
So if it's the clubhouse and if it's, the clubhouse would have any regular setbacks that already apply. I don't know whether, I want to explore additional setbacks like we have with some of these other uses. We could add setbacks for the equipment screening, you know, that they be a certain distance from the property line, things like that.
You might also want to deal with noise, because if you do have machinery that's going over, you know, and you have residents, so you might want, I don't know if it would just fall under the noise ordinance as is.
It would fall under the noise.
It would, okay.
Does that help, Matt?
It does, absolutely, thank you.
And probably, I mean, are there not other communities where we could look at a, kind of a best practice from another community with golf courses and see how they've built their regulations?
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
And that's probably an additional definition too, because I don't think we had that as well. I had that in it as a note.
I want to define it versus, like I said, somebody who's trying to maybe install a putt foot and tell us it's a golf course, kind of thing.
Multi-unit assisted living with service.
Yeah, so what I went with here is just simply a density or standard for, similar to what you'd see in a multifamily type of establishment. Once again, parking, buffering, stuff like that's covered in our ordinance somewhere else, unless you'd like to see kind of a specific standard for this type of use. I will say that multi-unit assisted living, one thing you do see less of is a parking requirement, because they're, the only people that park are the people that work there and come visit, so you do usually see a, a much lower parking demand at these type of uses than you would a traditional like apartment style living facility.
So the setbacks, buffering?
So yeah, unless you want something more than what's already in the ordinance, the general buffering requirements, the general setback requirements are what would apply.
All going to be plugged into that one.
Yes sir, absolutely.
And so Matt, are you saying on the parking, it's a lesser issue that we don't need to specify?
It usually is, yes ma'am, in my experience. And I know, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but what a lot of jurisdictions use to figure out parking requirements is I T E, the International Transit Engineer Organization, they do a parking manual and assisted living always shows up in their studies as being lower, much lower than traditional residential, just because a lot of those folks don't drive or drive as much.
Understood.
Yeah, I think that the, the units per acre should be higher for that reason, because, you know, also, for instance, if you have a, you know, condo unit or an apartment building, you're probably going to have a swimming pool, you're going to have some recreational facilities outdoors that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have here, yeah.
We, what I did here was plug in what's a typical standard multifamily suburban density in here. So certainly if the board thinks it should be higher or lower, whatever, you know, this was just a, what, what you see in most suburban multifamily style developments is usually around twelve, sometimes they go up to fifteen, sixteen units an acre. But we can tweak that either way if the board has consensus to do so.
Right now, we don't have anything like this on the island, so.
The only assisted living facility we have is in Pine Forest.
Pine Forest, right.
And that's governed by its own master plan for Pine Forest.
Yeah, where my dad is in Southport, they have seventy rooms. And that property cannot be more than three acres, it's probably not even that.
One level?
I'm sorry.
One level or?
One level, yeah.
So you're going to plug those regs into this and bring us a clean copy back?
What regs?
The, for the assisted living or just use C supplemental?
Well, you only have to say C supplemental.
Okay.
All the, all the performance standards apply to everything.
Across the board.
Yeah, where you see specific setbacks, parking, buffering, lighting requirements is where we suggested something above and beyond what's already in our performance standards. If it's not listed, if something's not in here, the, the regular performance standards will still apply, so we don't have to duplicate.
Okay, dwelling.
Hold on one second, so are we saying we're leaving, to Ms. Morgan's point, are we saying we're leaving this at twelve units per acre as the board recommendation? I mean, I'm, I'd like.
I'd like it to be higher, but I don't know what the number should be.
Right.
Maybe if we can revisit it.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
Stay with the twelve, but.
I'll do a little research on it.
If, if staff has some issues with that, that's something we could look at down the road.
Depends on whatever density you're comfortable with.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, just from my own experience, we're not voting on this today, we're going to come back, digest this. Okay, good.
Yeah, so what, once we get through all this and y'all are ready to make a recommendation at the next meeting, I'll have a clean full sheet and a consistency statement for you guys to consider.
Very good.
I reserve the right to ask a lot of stupid questions. No questions stupid.
Dwelling garage apartment as accessory.
So this is not really allowed in most of the town already. The, usually what you run into with a garage apartment is people not putting in, you know, they might have a driveway that fits their cars, but they don't have a, a park, a place for the, the person who's going to be living in the accessory unit to park at. So that's what we plugged in here. I will say accessory buildings are already limited in our ordinance to ten percent of the lot area, so the sizes are, and the height of accessory buildings, both of those are already covered under our ordinance, which is typically kind of the other things you would probably look to tweak in a accessory unit.
If it's built on the island, it would be garage or no garage, it would be an elevated structure to comply with, you know, flood regulations, so there's an area to park underneath that already.
Yeah, if it's.
But it's not technically a garage as defined.
Yeah, what you would run into if somebody's not in the special flood hazard area, they wouldn't necessarily have to elevate that structure. So it's only when they're in the special flood hazard area that you're required to elevate above the flood hazard area.
So there's a house three, there's a house three doors down from me that's building a completely separate unit from their home, and it's going to be a guest house, a separate and apart from the house itself. It is stilted because it's in the flood plain.
Yeah.
So in that case, would that fall under this? But it's, because it's not a garage technically, that's where I'm trying to draw the delineation, is the distinction here that there's a garage that's defining this one, because if it's not a garage, but just a raised structure, they can park under it and?
Yeah, and one thing we could do with this, to cover that type of situation, is just change this from garage apartment to accessory dwelling unit, which is what most places call it, and that covers any potential dwelling unit.
Yeah, I actually, I actually added that in my suggested definitions, is that we add accessory dwelling in it.
So now the living, the living square footage, is it still, is the combination of the two still at the four thousand dollar, on four thousand square foot or less limit?
And so that's for the primary residence, right? So if you build an accessory dwelling, if you build any accessory building, it's capped at ten percent of the, the lot area for the square footage.
So you can have a four thousand square foot home and then have a four hundred square foot accessory building?
Yes.
That's livable.
Well, it has to be a dwelling, so what is a dwelling? A dwelling is a place that has bedroom, bathroom, and a place to cook food. So it has to have all three of those things in order to be considered a dwelling, otherwise it's just a regular accessory building.
So technically, that's a way to get around the four thousand square foot limit if you want to, is just have something that's completely detached, but separate from the main living.
As long as it's not a dwelling unit. Like I said, it has to have all three of those things in order to be considered a dwelling unit. We have plenty of people that put up a building that has a room and a bathroom in it. And that's not a dwelling unit, because it doesn't have a kitchen as well. It needs to have all three of those elements in order to be considered a dwelling unit.
So if we want to manage those things as well through the ordinance, that's a whole separate definition and stipulation as to how to manage that?
Yeah, we would get into all, we would get into regulations for all accessory buildings at that point, because that's what you're doing in that instance.
Okay.
The challenge.
And can I just question?
I don't think we should abandon that discussion, or, because I do think you can have a bedroom and a bathroom, but as long as you're close enough and detached, could your deck connect it to the main house or no? Is that still detached or is that attached?
If it's not structurally attached, so that's when you start getting into building codes as far as what's.
So you could have a structurally detached, but your decking somehow take you to an adjacent house, and it gives you another bedroom for rental, but now you're around the, you're over the four thousand square foot.
But it's, it's not a house, because it's not a dwelling unit, and it's detached from the main.
I think what Mr. Gilbert is suggesting is that we need regulations around.
It feels like, it feels like we need to go down this rabbit hole at some point, just to make sure we don't create, you know, incentives to do things, you know.
Sure.
And I'm looking at one every time I pull out of my driveway, so. I mean, it's a beautiful structure, don't get me wrong, and it may not, combined maybe under the four thousand square foot, but, okay.
Can I just question the last word, business?
Oh yeah, that needs to be residence.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Apologize for that.
Are we good on that so far?
Good.
Dwelling multifamily. No more than twelve per acre. Seven X one is same as multi-unit. Provide stormwater. Now this, we added in stormwater. Sisterns.
Yeah, so this would be, this is, seven dot X dot two is essentially a, a low-impact development style of stormwater retention, so instead of what you might see, a wet pond or whatever, what this does is require them to come in and do some more innovative low-impact development management for these types of developments.
And again, parking, things like that are covered elsewhere in the ordinance?
Oh yes ma'am, hundred percent.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Are y'all comfortable with that, with that density?
Is that?
Twelve, like I said, that's a typical suburban, it's a typical suburban density. When I've looked at others, like I said, it usually ranges from about ten to fifteen or so. So I kind of just picked one in the middle and said, hey, let's start with this one. If you guys think it needs to be higher, lower, whatever, that's certainly something we could tweak.
I mean, we do have I mean, we do have affordable housing crisis. I'm just wondering if we need to make that a higher number.
Uh, the, the last jurisdiction I worked with had it pegged at 16. It, it seemed to work pretty well, but, uh, like I said, it's kind of a, the higher you go, the more, the more density you add, the more urban you, you tend towards, so.
And maybe Melanie, the way you fix it is if you go above, you have to designate so many as low income or something like that.
You can't do that.
You can't?
It's discriminatory.
Really? Okay.
Trust me, it burst my bubble when I found that out.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we say 16. And for what justification? Potentially providing more affordability.
Matt, in your opinion, how, how does raising the number of units affect the parking?
Yeah, I mean, you still, like, the, even in multifamily, the parking is based on the number of dwelling units. Really, what you do in that instance is, you know, you developers have to find more land because they're going to have to have more parking, um, for the density that you're having there, so. Yeah, like I said, it tends to, once you get past, uh, you know, the, the mid-teens, uh, you start getting into a more urban development pattern than suburban, so. But like I said, it just, but Ms. Morgan's right, increasing, uh, you know, the, the housing stock you have, uh, can affect, can potentially affect, you know, prices for rent housing and more competition, things like that, so.
So Matt, um, what would that mean in terms of a, of a multifamily building? Does that become 25 apartments instead of 15, or what, what is that in practical terms for us?
Yeah, so.
And I may be asking a question you can't calculate right now, but.
I think this is how we get it, Melanie's answer. Is it 16? Is it 20? Is it 12? I don't know that, you know, that sliding scale, but.
Yeah, so I mean, you think about it like this, if you have a 10-acre development coming in, if you peg it at 12, you have 120, potential 120 apartments there. If you peg it at 16, you, you're adding 40 more units to that 10 acres.
That's a big job.
But then when you look at the setback and when you look at all the other things, what's the real, what's the real capacity of a 10-acre for multifamily, you know, or, or start with just one acre even? I mean, I know that's probably your most restrictive, but.
Yeah, um, so I, I will say every time, places where I've worked that did have a higher dwelling requirement, uh, you typically, that's the maximum. A lot of places won't do that, uh, because of the land, because, because by the time you put in parking and stormwater and amenities and all that stuff, you usually end up a little bit lower than what the, the maximum capacity actually is.
So then can you put that number that we're trying to get to, that's sort of a phantom number, um, so like this? Can we put that also based on, to me, if it's an acre, 12 fails, fails right. If you're talking about five acre, then you can go up. There's sort of a sliding scale that this sort of allows you to go up. If you're talking 10 acre, then obviously you can slide that. So it's hard when we're talking here in terms of per acre, you know what I mean? And I don't know how you determine that sliding scale, but.
Maybe like 12 per acre up to five acres and then it.
Something like that feels right.
I think that makes good sense.
I can work on something like that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Dwelling over a business.
I, I do want to touch on a couple of things with this one first, um, you know, similar to the accessory dwelling unit, you know, making sure that there's a called-out parking requirement for something like this. This is also something I'd like to, to broach, like, you know, the question of, do we care if it's above a business or just attached to a business? Or, you know, like if it, let's say it's all one story and the dwelling unit is not on top, but it's behind the business, but a part of that structure. So I did want to kind of have, at least have the board consider whether it's worth saying, instead of dwelling over a business, dwelling attached to a business or accessory to a business to give, you know, then you have business owners that have a little bit of flexibility to say, well, I've got room behind, you know, to install a dwelling, but maybe not on top. And I don't think that there's a real big impact, you know, whether it's on top or behind it, you know.
The only thing with being on top is especially, it's, it's what is the business underneath it? If it's a restaurant, for example, that are prone to grease fire or something like that. Are there any added requirements that we would want to put in? Are there noise buffers that you would want to put, you know, is there a wall that would separate? I, I don't know, because.
Yeah, that, that gets all into the building code requirements. When you have a, when you attach a residence to a commercial use or a restaurant or something like that, there's, there's added fire requirements.
Okay.
The reason we don't see a lot of these is because the, the building requirements are pretty high in a lot of instances, and usually the return on investment is.
But there are a few of these on the island.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, and they're grandfathered at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you, Matt.
I personally looked at doing that on this lot I just built on over here, and, I mean, it's, it's a lot to try to do on a small piece of property.
That, yeah, that would be more or less on the mainland from here on out, what we're looking at. And that's going to be covered under the building codes, so.
Well, I, I would agree, but I don't know that we want to take that, because I do think from an affordable housing, and when you look at a business owner, they can buy a business and live right above it. There's an ability for us to encourage the commerce side, the business side to do that, you know, and maybe what, can you limit then who you can rent that to?
No.
You can't, okay.
No.
Y'all are going to be a problem, I'm telling you right now. But, but I, I, so I, I agree with you in principle, but I think if we pull back and just let's make sure, because it could be something we want to do to help the business community with cost of rent, offset cost of labor, things like that.
Oh, I will say, uh, a lot of, what, what, what we're getting at here is essentially mixed-use development.
Right, that's what I was just going to say.
Now, this is much more narrow, and that is one dwelling attached to a business.
Right.
Most of what you see, uh, in current trends for mixed use is what you call a four-over-one, which is four floors of, uh, residential above a first floor commercial. Um, and there's, don't ask me, but there's all kinds of economic reasons why that works out for people who want to build this type of thing. Uh, we're not going to see that on the island because we have a 35-foot height restriction.
Right.
You know, we have limited parking places, so, um, that, that's probably not a development pattern then unless any of those things change for whatever reason that we're going to see bear out here on the island. Doing, to Ms. Morgan's point that she made, doing a, doing a commercial first floor and just one floor residential is usually not cost-effective with the current standards for, for building, something like that. So the ones that we have, I'm glad that we have them, and if somebody wants to take it on and do it, that's great. But we're, I don't think we have to worry about seeing that, you know, four-over-one style of mixed use here on the island.
So in the spirit of some of these, and David, I apologize, I feel like I'm being disruptive, and I do. We don't want to let good, I mean, great get in the way of good. And, and so approving something, can we always come back and like, something like that or something like, the multifamily, the acreage thing, and so adopt something, but then come back as a board and begin to really get more into the detail on some of these specifics that create incentives to do what we want the island to do?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, good. I just want to, I know people don't like that change, that iterative process, but I feel like, okay.
And to that point, so, and to your point, Matt, in terms of mixed-use development, is that something we look at as a use? Is that a, an overlay district? What does that look like if we think about that for the future?
Yeah, um, so we, we have a couple of places on the mainland that could end up being mixed-use. There's a couple of pieces of pine forest that in their master plan is called out as mixed-use. There's a couple of pieces on the, the Williamson master plan, uh, that was, uh, done a couple of years ago that call out, you know, mixed use specifically. It's, it's definitely a, a hot topic in planning and something we can, you know, continue that discussion to tackle for sure.
I mean, normally, isn't that considered a good thing because it
Yeah.
it basically increases the tech, the re, tax revenue for the property?
Yeah, when you think about, um, you know, the, what, what, what planning trends are going towards now is more of a, trying to get folks in more of a, you know, traditional small-town downtown type of thing, because the, you have higher tax revenue on those, they're more resilient to downturns because people are living there and maybe working or shopping there, um, that type of thing. So there's definitely a, a lot of perceived benefits to that type of development pattern. When you look at, uh, agencies that have kind of mapped the tax revenue for areas versus the losses, the costs, suburban development usually costs much more than an urban core does. So what you see, a lot of urban cores are essentially subsidizing the cost of the suburban development as well. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's definitely an interesting conversation and something that, you know, as we dig into the, the comp plan going forward and, uh, other regulations, something we want to keep abreast of and uh, see if there's any way to incentivize it or, you know, make sure it fits the needs of the town for sure, yeah.
Okay, dwelling townhouse development. Seven units per acre.
Yeah, and once again, that's, that's pretty typical. That's what we saw with the, you know, we recently had a townhouse development on, at Pine Forest. Uh, there were about five or six units per acre. So just kind of looking, once again, at typical suburban standards and what we see in the development pattern here on the town, uh, seemed to make sense as a target for us.
Residential childcare facilities.
Yeah, so residential childcare facilities, um, uh, this is something that's, uh, also regulated by the state. If you have an in-home daycare, you know, you limit the number of children that are allowed to go there in order to qualify for this. Really, the only thing that local jurisdictions are allowed to do in terms of these in-home daycares is set a distance requirement from each one. This distance requirement's already in our ordinance and a couple other places, um, so it just made sense to make sure it's incorporated here too.
And we have a way of actually monitoring compliance of that distance?
Yeah, if they come in, they'd have to come in and get a, a permit, and we can locate it versus any other permits we have on file.
And no need to limit the number of children is in a residential?
It's limited by the state statute.
State, okay.
Audio/video production facilities. Self-explanatory.
Yeah, um, the only thing I can think of here, and certainly if the board wants to, we could add specific buffer requirements or something like that. Versus the general ones we have in the ordinance was, uh, maybe making sure we don't have somebody who's doing a, a movie studio production uh, out of their office downtown or, you know, right out here, uh, adjacent to a residential use. You know, the CLD, uh, you know, you might see something like that, uh, in more open areas. But once again, just, uh, really the, the best way to mitigate the impacts is to make sure that, uh, the production stuff is happening inside instead of outside. But if there's additional standards, the board thinks are appropriate.
But this, but again, anyways, all those things would still be.
Still be covered, yes, sir.
There's setbacks and buffers and everything because it's indoors.
Unless there's like a specific higher standard you guys want to see for this, um, they'd have a Class B buffer, which is kind of our middle-tier buffer, um, typical setbacks, parking environments, et cetera.
Automobile parking garages or parking lot independent?
So, uh, just for reference, these are only permitted in the, the CB zoning district now, so the commercial areas here on the island, they're not permitted anywhere else. Parking lots do tend to have some impacts, especially when you're adjacent to residential, so, uh, making sure that their lighting is, you know, set up not to shine onto adjacent properties, uh, making sure they have an appropriate street yard buffer requirement. And we went with a A2, which is kind of a, it's tighter buffer, but it's, as far as our, we have two A categories, A1 and A2. A2 is narrower, but it has more plantings in it, so the, the vegetation's a little bit denser with an A2 versus an A1.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I don't want to open a can of worms here that it takes an hour to explain this to me, but, um, the dark sky lighting. Is that lighting that shines down only and that, is there a certain height?
Uh, we have height restrictions for lighting elsewhere in the ordinance. Um, dark sky requirement is, like you just said, it, it's cast downward. There's, it has to be shielded, and we have, we do have some shielding stuff.
That's the cutoff.
Similar to a cutoff light, yes, sir. But it's essentially to cut down on light pollution, basically, is the, the standard there.
But it's not like, it can only be so many inches off the ground?
No, you can have a, a higher light that's, that's dark sky, yeah. It, it has to do with the shielding and the way that the light is actually cast on the site.
Okay.
And that takes us into publicly owned parking lots. And it's virtually the same. With the exception of.
Yeah, buffers. Street yard.
Yeah.
A buffer from adjacent properties. I mean, these are town parking lots, so, um, whether we want to have, you know, there, there might be an argument, that's what's good for the goose, that's good for the gander, but, uh, whether the town needs to install some street yards.
Yeah. Car wash.
And hang on.
Okay, go ahead.
Were we have on these some of the buffer designations? I know I'm going to need to go back and look at what all of those buffer designations are to make sure, you know, that we're sort of choosing ones that, again, enhance the environment, that aren't just, you know, okay.
And I, I can send you guys the, uh,
If you would mind, that would be great.
The breakdown of that.
Because we've got them throughout here.
For our new members, we'll, we'll print out a copy of the UDO for you.
Oh, thank you, thank you, yeah.
It's, it's too long for yourself.
And you can also go on MUNI code, right, and search.
Yes, somewhere.
If you go online, the web, um, Lisa can tell, point you to that.
Yeah.
MUNI code site where you can just search for anything.
I'll try and become independent.
That's, no, you'll get there, it's fine.
It's actually works pretty well, I think.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
On the parking lots, independent and, um, publicly owned, how about, um, type of surface for parking and stormwater?
Impervious, impervious, yeah.
Yeah, should that be covered elsewhere?
Well, you can dictate that here if you want to. Um, we, we did in a couple of places, like the, the Coliseum stadiums, because those are generally associated with very large parking areas for all the people that are coming there. So I put in something to stipulate that those parking areas be pervious. For any parking lot, whether it's pervious or, if it's impervious, they're going to have to deal with the stormwater onsite in some way. If they choose an impervious material, then that's a benefit to them because they might be able to have more parking because they're not eating up parking with stormwater because the, they don't have any runoff on the site. Certainly, you could stipulate it one way or another here if you wanted to, um, but the, anybody who wants to set one of these up is going to have to make a choice, essentially, of, hey, do I want to do impervious and deal with stormwater, or, or impervious and deal with stormwater requirements, or pervious and not? Whether we want to dictate that or leave it up to the individual.
I think for clarity of the regulation, it would be helpful to be able to see here that, you know, if you choose impervious, there are other rules and regulations. If you choose pervious, so I don't know, Matt, if you could wordsmith that.
It's almost like there's, the same thing we were just talking about for buffer, but for parking.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we could do in, what, what you would do is.
For the different parking.
Is just, I mean, it, it already applies, but we could stipulate in there, you know, pervious or impervious surface parking lots have to comply with the section of our ordinance that deals with stormwater.
I think that would be good.
But anyway, but yeah.
For clarity, I think that would be good for clarity.
Absolutely.
And so that would apply both on publicly owned and?
Private.
And private?
And we're on car wash. Lighting, street yards, shade trees, all of that's already defined, so what other stipulations would we think of? They've got the, on the ordinance, they already have the buffers, vegetation, stormwater.
Um, would we want to say, first of all, I have to give the disclaimer that I've owned and operated a car wash for many, many years. I can tell you, if anybody complained about anything, it was the noise
Noise, yes.
of the equipment. Uh, would we want to designate a buffer between a car wash? a car wash and residential?
And so they they have to stall, install one? This is a commercial use. If it's adjacent to a residential, they'd have to install a buffer. If you want to go to make sure it's one of the more dense ones, we could stipulate a B2 in here, a type of buffer, so that the space, like I said earlier, the the space of that is a little bit narrower, but it's more dense as far as the plantings go. So that might ameliorate some of the.
I mean, specifically between it and residential.
Yeah, right. Yeah, if it's business to business, we don't require a buffer for something like that, yes, ma'am.
And I will, I'm I'm not objecting to it, but I will say that shade trees are a pain at a car wash because leaves and sometimes flowers come off of trees and the wind blows it. If the car's doors open, people track it in and out, it is a pain. I'm not going to object to it.
But the buffer can be regular hedge type vegetation.
A B2 buffer is for every 100 feet of that buffer, you have four shade trees and 20 large shrubs.
Yeah.
So it is mostly shrubs, but there are a shade tree requirement in there. If you wanted to, to stipulate a different type of buffer in here, you could be specific about, we only want large evergreen shrubs for this use or something like that would be acceptable.
How it comes with a plan, you might suggest evergreen so that the leaves stay on.
Already suggesting that, you know.
Yeah, I'm just.
That will be up to.
That's why I think, looking at those buffers, I think that might be something we might want to strengthen.
Well, the B2 is the best.
Yeah, B2 is our most dense planting requirement for a buffer.
Okay, not clubs and social clubs.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, back to the car wash. So no, no need in our, to reference stormwater or drainage or runoff or anything like that related to car washes?
They'd have.
Is that all?
Every new development has to comply with the stormwater regulations of the town and water and sewer requirements.
And hours of operation, we don't need to?
Typically, we don't, we only have a few hours of operation regulations in the UDO. Certainly, if there's a concern, we could probably add some. But we, a lot of that's usually taken care of by the noise ordinance because if after a certain amount of time you can only make X amount of noise, you're probably not going to, especially a car wash, stay open, you know, if you're constantly violating the noise ordinance.
Can I ask one more thing? Would we want to and are we able to make any requirement about water recycling?
Yes.
I can check in with Public Utilities because really that's going to depend on what they can require for the for the wastewater on the site. And I'm just not sure whether we could, how we would stipulate that.
It's actually a big cost cutter for the business.
It is, that's right.
Not just in the water, but also in the chemicals that you have to add. Because if there's already some soap in there, you don't have to add as much.
Yeah, I'll check in with Public Works.
But there are some that actually don't recycle.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I think it would be a benefit for us not to be, you know, taking that into a system or anything like that. But I'll just have to circle with them to see how that works.
Okay, not clubs and social clubs. And again, this is going to be buffers. You've got the B2 buffer. It's going to go under the typical business standards. What other stipulations could we?
I know for me, hours, noise, lighting, I realize that's covered elsewhere in the ordinance, but I think, having lived near one for a while, I can tell you that hours and noise are a huge, huge issue with this use in our town.
This is where I'd almost want to see it, you know, a higher buffer than what we even, because here's the thing, you have so much congregation in the parking lot, people have been drinking. There, that's the noise that you're dealing with. It's not the noise inside the building because you can regulate that to some degree. But this is happening now at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning or whenever, which if it's beside a residence, to me, this is where I would almost put a B3, a definition of a different buffer that truly.
Can we require a minimum distance between that and residential?
Yeah, you could increase the setback beyond the minimums if you want to. We've done that with a couple other uses. We do have, so A and B are our typical buffers. We do have a Type C and D buffer as well. And what that, what a Type C does is allow you to use an opaque fence for basically 50% of your plantings. So that might be a little bit, you know, you still have to plant some. You have to plant half of what you would be required.
And what's D?
And then also do an opaque fence as well. So that's, that's probably something we could.
What was D? Did you say there was a D as well?
D is a vegetated berm, which certainly could help some situations, but especially, you know, when we're tied on space, having somebody required to put in a berm is going to eat up a lot of that, that footprint for the developer.
Could you, could we ask you to bring back some revised language here with respect to how we're more protective of these types of establishments that are near residential areas?
I think I'm hearing increased setbacks, maybe the Type C buffer instead of the Type B2, definitely.
And I'd love to just look at the buffer definitions and just see what those are. But to me, if a business, any of these businesses is open beyond a certain time, and maybe that's nine, maybe that's 10, I don't know what, to me, then having a buffer that sort of corresponds, because that, again, that's the activity in the parking lot that creates a noise over and above the business itself. So we can look at all that.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the time limit on the noise ordinance, Matt? Is it 11:00 PM?
We're going to deal with this one.
I believe it is 11.
11, I thought, was Saturdays.
Later on the weekend.
Which I don't understand because technically.
We got to sleep every night.
Every day. And also every day, too, in the summer is a weekend, you know, and so but.
I'll take that.
So just, if you can have it a certain time during Monday through Friday, I don't know why Saturday and Sunday have to be any different.
It's not. That was changed last year to be standard. It's 11, but it's 11 across the board.
Oh, so every night is 11?
Yeah, it's not different.
We're going to come back and do it, if you don't mind.
So, Mr. Chair, for point of order, if we could ask all the members of the board to ask to be recognized, to speak, the board is not conversational. People need to be recognized, so that we're not speaking over each other.
Yep, no, I apologize.
It's okay, it's okay.
Making the rules already.
Yes.
Okay, well, with regard to defining these establishments, you know, my, my notes in the definitions, I had some questions about defining bars, brew clubs and brew pubs and nightclubs. For instance, I'm just thinking if we put a residential buffer, Second Wind, what, what would that be classified as, Matt? Would that be classified as a nightclub?
I believe it's classified as a bar, but I'd have to check and see on that. And I want to point out that anything that the town council adopts, unless they also adopt an amortization process, that it deals with new development. You know, if you have a buffer requirement and there's a use that's already established there, I won't be able to go say, hey, you're, you got to go put a buffer in at that point. But to your question, I believe Second Wind is defined as a bar, but I'd have to go back and see some of the paperwork when, when it opened and pull all that out.
I mean, I was just curious. I'm happy to put a residential buffer for any new nightclub.
So you're going to bring us back some suggestions?
Setbacks buffering, higher buffer requirements are the two big suggestions there, yeah.
And no changes, Mr. Chair and Matt, relative to noise, the noise ordinance limiting nightclubs and social clubs to maybe a stricter after a certain time?
Well, the noise ordinance is not in the UDO, so this board can't initiate a amendment to the noise ordinance specifically. If you do want, what you could do is plug in hours, suggested hours of operations, but.
Right.
But that would cover all establishments from that point on?
Yeah, it would cover, like you just said, stuff from that point on. So if the board wants, I mean, there, like I said, there, it's not, totally not in the UDO. There are a couple of uses where we have hours of operations. But the, one thing I will say from a, stand for my staff here for just a second, one thing we run into is, let's say you, we put hours of operations in the UDO and somebody's open past those hours of operations and somebody calls me and says, Matt, they're open past the hours of operations, I have to send a person out to confirm that. So if that's at 12 o'clock at night, I have to get one of my zoning technicians or myself or somebody on my staff to go actually see that violation happening, which we're normal office staff, we're eight to five every day. So we can do it.
Enforcement is challenging.
But yeah, my point is enforcing that from a, from a UDO standpoint, it puts an additional strain on staff.
Good to know, thank you.
Yes. Question, is that not something that the police department could handle?
So the police does handle the noise ordinance.
Yeah, nobody just affirmed that the business is open past a designated time. They can't do that on behalf of your staff.
And that has to deal with, so when I'm thinking about these things, I'm thinking about if somebody appeals our decision as, as the zoning officials, the, the person who writes the letter, who cites everything, is the person that has to testify on appeal. So if we're relying on a third party to actually go out and verify these things, then we've kind of expanded the number of people and the, you know, the testimony that we're going to have to receive on an appeal or something.
Yeah.
Harder to win a case.
Yeah, it's much harder to win a case like that, for sure.
Okay, so you're bringing that back to us on the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Number, we're on page 40 now. These are pretty much accessory freestanding we took out and just put accessory structure.
Oh, so, oh, yeah, okay, sorry. I got mixed up. Apologize. So these are, what we've done here is, you saw some of these definitions last time, so we're just continuing to build. So basically, what would be beneficial here, so we don't have to go through page by page, is probably those comment pages y'all sent in. If you want to individually go through those and give us all your suggestions or comments, just so we're not going through the definition page line by line.
Carrie, you have anything?
No, I did not prepare pages like this.
Carrie, you go ahead and cheat.
So, let's see, so my pages begin, page 122, I think?
No, 165.
165, sorry. So I have suggested, as I mentioned earlier, that we add a definition for accessory dwelling unit. I've given some suggested text there, Matt. Obviously, this is just me throwing things out. You fine tune it from a professional planner perspective. And then I think we also said somewhere that we need somehow to address these accessory units that are non-dwelling, to Mr. Gilbert's point. So I'd suggest that somehow we add that as our list of definitions, regulations, whatever.
What do you mean by address?
We need to add that probably to the regulations, I think, right? Supplemental regulations around accessory units that are non-dwelling.
So what you get in there is to regulate all accessory buildings. So if that's something the board wants to tackle, we can, but it would be applicable to anybody that wants to build an accessory building, period.
Any shed.
Shed, doghouse.
Yeah. You know, whether you want to, you know, reduce how much impervious surface coverage you're allowed under that, that's probably the, the way to do something like what you're talking about.
Well, we can certainly table that for a future discussion, but I think it is a relevant concern that Mr. Gilbert has raised, right? Continuing to go through the definitions. Again, as I've said before, and sorry to be on my soapbox about this, but I think we have some work that we can do on automotive uses in terms of additional consolidation on the uses with those, perhaps combining some definitions around automotive and then another section around parking. So that would be a suggestion that we work on that a little bit. And, and you know, that can include things like battery charging stations. There's a whole lot of things that could be consolidated through all these definitions into overall automotive uses. So that would be one of my suggestions. We don't have a definition for Coliseum, so we need to add that. I'm just going through here alphabetically. I made a suggestion under clubs and lodges, nonprofit, also some suggested language there. Also, colleges, universities and community college. There's a stipulation for prerequisites to, in the definition, which I thought was a little strange. We as a town are trying to specify prerequisites for, I don't know, I don't know, Matt, where that, but I just saw that in there. I thought that was interesting.
That one came from the SIC manual.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not sure that should be part of our definition, so just a cosmetic change. And then as we get under, into dwellings, I had some changes there suggested, right? And then under multifamily dwellings, I think there's probably some combinations we can make here. I was a little confused as to dwelling, single family, small. Why do we define it as small as opposed to just dwelling, single family for our current definition?
That, that deals with the way that the town regulates dwelling unit size on the island. So the small is anything up to 4,000 square feet and the large is anything over that, up to 5,000 square feet. And so delineating those two is how we say, okay, this one's permitted and this one's permitted with a special use permit. If you make, if you just say dwelling, somebody's going to look at that and go, oh, that's.
I see.
That's everything, right?
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So, so then under the definition dwelling, single family, it says not exceed 3,999. That should be 4,000?
No.
No.
So small is not 4,000 and lower?
It's 3,999.
3,999.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, again, just the same clarification question, Matt, single family mainland, why do we need that specific definition?
Because we don't limit size for single family residences on the mainland. That 4,000, on the mainland, your house can be as large or as small as you want.
And then things like dwelling three family, dwelling two family, question was, could those could be combined into the overall multifamily definition? Or do you feel it's important that we have those specified?
It is because those types of dwellings are different under the building code than a multifamily.
Fair enough.
Development. The two families are duplex, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is the reason we limit the square foot on the island and not on the mainland that on the mainland you can have a great big lot to put your great big house on? Is that?
I wasn't here when they drafted those regulations, so I couldn't really speak to, without pulling some minutes from when that decision was made as to the why of it. Yeah, I have to do some research on that for you.
Okay.
And then dwelling unit, I had some, I don't, I think that was just a suggested text clarification there. And I think it says exactly what you recommended, Matt, about what that means, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation be specified.
And I might have mentioned this before, there, there are certain, per 160D, there are certain definitions that the town can't exceed state regulations for, and dwelling unit's one of them. So we, we need to match the state building code definition for dwellings.
And you feel like ours does that?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware, when 160D was adopted, the town reviewed all our ordinances to make sure that they're compliant with those requirements.
Okay. And then, again, as we go into the Fs, I'm at filling station. Again, combining somehow into automotive to group, you know, gas stations, filling stations, everything related to automotive. Was I, I think I was inserting fire and EMS station as a definition? I don't know if it was, I don't think it was in there, was a suggestion. I don't know if it was, I don't think it was in there was a suggestion. And then, uh, floor area ratio, Matt, you have talked about that sometime. I think it's an interesting concept. And I wondered if we should add that definition and then sort of define the calculation in the definitions would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Lots of graphical examples I could pop into the ordinance.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Again, as we go into G, add golf courses, we said we didn't have a definition for golf courses. So I would, and I just penciled that in since we just talked about it. Do we have good definitions for all the government, like government building offices and government postal processing? Just a question as to if we, we're happy with all of those definitions. Granny pod temporary health structure. I just added some commentary there. It says, um, I suggested to strike, the impairment must be certified in writing by a physician licensed in North Carolina. I know, Matt, we have taken in other U D O changes we've made, you know, we've taken out the town's ability to require state certifications on things and licensing, correct? So maybe we could replace with as recommended by a physician licensed or something to that effect. Just want us to be consistent about licensing and state certifications.
Yeah, what, what I can do is, um, this is, uh, covered under, uh, state statute. When we're allowed to do those, I'll, I'll make sure what our definition is matches the, the state.
Okay.
In that instance. If it's in the state definition, it'd be better to just leave it in. And so we're not, you know, messing around with it too much. But, uh, yeah, I definitely get your point, like, who's going to check the.
To me, it just seems to contradict other things we've done in the U D O revisions where we've taken out. You know, you don't have to be licensed to be a child daycare center here on the island, things like that. We've removed that throughout the U D O otherwise, so.
Can I ask a quick question about that? I'm sorry. Um, Matt, so if someone were to come in and, um, want to provide that information, is that something that would just be checked off that had been provided as far as seen, or is that something that would be kept? Because that's a different record-keeping with HIPAA laws.
Uh, yeah.
I just wanted to know that.
It's a great challenge that we haven't run into yet.
Okay.
Deal with that one when it comes up.
But to, but again, it was one of the reasons why we took out some of the licensing requirements because the town wasn't equipped to enforce.
Right.
Whether certain people were licensed. So in this case, unless we have a staff process to capture these impair, these certified impairments, I think it's a question mark. Thank you, Matt.
And I'm looking at the definition and it's not in the state definition, so we can just match those up for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Habitable room, uh, had a suggestion, um, excluding bathrooms as a habitable room, obviously. And then add under a certain square footage and space for closets and storage. In other words, are we saying, are we making sure that people don't use closets and storage spaces for habitation?
Well, that, uh, all these terms that are in here, uh, are out of building code definitions. So when you come in and you do a floor plan, you have to label what each space is. And to my knowledge, what's in here matches that. If you're gonna add a space requirement for closets, I, I don't know how we would check that if somebody's used, you know, like, oh, we got people sleeping in the closet over here. I can't really go in.
My husband actually did that, I think, in college.
I'm sure. I don't doubt people have done it. That's something that I think we would run into some challenges from a, uh, one, from an enforcement standpoint. And two, um, we can't dictate, uh, the size and placement of rooms in single-family.
Okay.
Through zoning. And, and that's another challenge we run into because you might have a, one huge bedroom that might have five beds in it. But I can't tell you it has to be smaller or bigger from a zoning standpoint.
Well, it, it is an exclusion, so I see that. We're fine there. And then I added, um, proposed to add a definition for impervious surface. And then I did a little research as to kind of maybe some potential language. I think, I think that's a good thing to add in terms of the definition, so people fully understand when we talk about it, what does it really mean? So again, just throwing out some language, Matt, obviously defer to staff for, um, appropriate language.
With, uh, Rick Patterson.
With Rick, okay.
Administrator for that.
Almost done, folks. Just, let's see, a couple of, um, suggestions on kennels for commercial and private. Nothing crazy there, but I thought that's something that we had talked a little bit about when we went through the table of uses. You know, it's kind of interesting to, to talk about those. Manufacturing light, suggestion to add an, as an indoor establishment or activity and without outdoor storage of machines and materials. Does that make sense to anybody?
I think.
A manufacturing light would be indoor?
Yeah, um, I do think, uh, materials is good, uh, equipment. You know, might be, you know, I, I don't know, it depends on the, the size and type of equipment on site. As far as whether it's feasible to store it indoors or not. Certainly, we can, if the board all agrees, we could add something like that in there.
Uh, multi-use commercial, uh, just a question for the group. I mean, it's, it references under ten thousand square feet of gross leasable area. Is ten thousand a reasonable number? I, I don't know, just thinking out loud.
And I could look at some of what we've got here in the town to give you a good example.
Yeah, it, it, it seems high to me, so.
And that why is it not two or more?
Right, yeah, right.
Uh, I'll take a look at, uh, probably Publix here on the island. And see what square footage that is to give you guys an idea of what that might look like.
Um, nightclubs, again, I think we've talked about this. We probably need to work on the definition there a little bit. I don't have any recommendations on it, but I just think that we do need to, uh, uh, non-conforming use. You know, obviously, is non-conforming is a big concern for our community and changes to the, to the U D O. So, um, my note was, do we need to define the implications, reveal limitations here? I think that's covered though, isn't it? We have those.
Yeah, so that, what, uh, yes, that's covered in, uh, our ordinance elsewhere as far as if you are non-conforming use, what regulations apply. And something I would, uh, try to avoid is try, is putting regulations in the definition. You want the definition to just define what a thing is and have the regulations out there.
Okay. Observation tower. Commercial buildings, is that already in there or did I insert that? Maybe attached to a commercial building? I think, Ms. Morgan, you had a comment on that too, right?
Yeah, I mean, why is that only commercial, why is that only? Can we not have a private one? I'm just curious.
Uh, it prob, I'd have to do some digging, but it probably relates to the height restrictions in the town for observation towers. I can come back with some clarity on that.
Okay. Um, oceanfront light trespass, um, I think, Ms. Morgan, I think you had a comment about this too. I think I was saying disruptive to surrounding properties or not in the interest of public safety, just a suggestion to be added to that definition. Office medical, I think this is more of a, a more detailed definition was all of suggesting there. Certainly, you can take it or not take it. Same for office professional. Um, as we go down on page one seventy-eight, parking facility. Again, you know, we need to combine the parking and the automotive, maybe in two separate uses and do better definitions. Planned unit development on page one seventy-nine. I thought we removed that as a use. Do we need to have that defined in the definitions?
Uh, well, we, we do still have a planned unit development property in the town. Williamson tract is on planned unit development, so it, it's good to keep the definition in there, one, for that property.
Okay.
Two, also, we, uh, the way we removed that from the ordinance was that we said that, uh, stuff that falls under that category would need to use conditional zoning instead.
Correct.
So there's still a reference to it in the ordinance, so we should probably keep the definition in there.
Jumping back up to the top of the page, add penal and correctional facilities as a definition, and then we need a definition on that. Page one eighty, just made again some specific, um, comments. If we go down to, um, add recreation, public indoor, public outdoor as opposed to, um, privately owned or independent recreation indoor and outdoor. I know that's been kind of, we talked a lot about that, Matt, during the, 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 the review of the table. But I'm not sure we have that exactly right. Recreation, commercial indoor, doesn't include arena. Do we need it? Why not? And then recreation outdoor doesn't include stadiums, which I think we talked about, Colosseums, Colosseums and stadium being covered somewhere. And then, um, if we go forward to page one eighty-one, I'm sorry, I have voluminous comments about residential property. I made a suggestion to, um, not include hotels as under the residential property definition. And then add residential rental property as a definition, just to specify the differences between the two. And I, Matt, I pulled that residential rental property definition from another town who has it defined. So that's where that came from. I didn't make that up. I actually pulled that off another town's definition. And I feel, based on where our community's going and how we're growing, that this is very important to add to the definitions. Does anybody disagree with that?
I mean, I don't really know that it has to be defined because pretty much any residential property can be a rental property.
Well, I think, I think for me, residential property is where someone lives there full-time. A property that is rented has people coming in and out of it. So that, to me, is very different.
Matt, question.
Sure.
What does the state statute say as far as what local municipalities can do as far as residential rentals versus residential houses?
Yeah, um, so one of the definitions we have to match, uh, in our zoning regulations is for one and two-family dwelling units. State calls out in that definition that it's suitable for rental. I feel like if we try to define that as something else, when it says in the, this, that state building code regulation that a single or two-family is available for, for sale or rent or, you know, whatever. We've essentially defined that as something else if we base it on the fact that it's being rented alone. There are some, there's been a, a couple of court cases around, uh, short-term rentals, uh, even here in the area. Wilmington went through one, uh, that have, in some ways restricted what we can do towards short-term rentals. Left the door open for some other things. In my opinion, what it leaves the door open for is, uh, if somebody has a dwelling unit and they're renting out rooms out of that, not if you're just renting the entire house as one unit, because that's still defined in the, the state building code as a single-family residence, whether it's for rent or for sale or for occupancy or, or anything like that. It's definitely, uh, to Ms. McCullough's point, um, it's definitely something that towns are dealing with all across the state. Obviously, we've got a definition here. I do think it's a, a pretty big conversation for us to have, for sure. To, as far as adding the definition now, um, we don't have any regulations for this type of use. So we would just have a definition in the ordinance in and of itself. But, you know, if you guys want to recommend putting one in there. Like, there's no regulation towards it, so it wouldn't harm anything to include it in there, right? So.
Yep.
I don't know.
It's no harm in including it, I just, you know, one of my points was that in, you know, defining a hotel, you know, we could define that hotels and motels rent rooms individually. You know, whereas the vacation rental homes are all, the entire property's rented to one party. I mean, it, it.
To draw a distinction.
Yes.
I mean, basically, when people see that, that, uh, it's a hotel if it has more than, you know, sleeps more than fourteen people, then that's where some of the confusion and debate comes in. I was telling Steve, I re, I saw that one of the new ones is advertising it sleeps forty-two.
No, no.
Yes, yes. So I, I mean, if we can just add it, I just feel like that's kind of planning for the future. If we need to build regs around it in the future. I realize there's state limitations around, we can't ask rental properties to, to register or to identify, those kind of things. Completely understand that. I just think going forward, it would be good to define it for the town as we go to the future, okay? Retaining wall, um, we had some discussion about this at a prior meeting. I know Ms. Morgan remembers this, but, um, I just, I thought it was interesting that, because now, at least on the, the intercoastal waterway side, a retaining wall can actually have three sides, right? And I think we talked about that, so it's just, I don't know, Matt, what do you think?
Well, if it, if it goes, if the third, if, you might have a retaining wall on each side, right? Let's say you back up to the intercoastal and these are the side property lines.
Or a dune.
All the way down. Once you get to the water, that part is not a retaining wall, that part is a bulkhead.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
The difference, the difference between the two is, uh, a retaining wall is earth on both sides. It's dirt. Uh, a bulkhead is something that's water-dependent, meaning it's got dirt on one side and water on the other side. So that's something, um, but to your point, we do need to make sure that these definitions are, are clear as far as what's what.
Well, and some bulkheads are during a high tide or during a king tide. But during the, not, those non-king tide, it's just a retaining wall kind of thing. But also from a, a three-sided, you do have retaining walls to support dune structure, so you don't have erosion there, so.
And I'm not sure that sides and number of sides is even relevant because, you know, mine is curved.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We're just talking about sides here, it's talking about, here's your wall, here's one side, here's the other side.
Well, it currently. All right, it currently says two sides, so.
Yeah, so you got, you have a wall and you have this side over here and this side over here.
I guess I could say mine has two sides.
So we, if you want to leave that out, I don't have any problem, I just wanted to. Okay.
Okay.
And then, um, let's see, um, adding special events, we go to page one eighty-three. And we, I think we've talked again about this several times about, we need to get some definitions around special events and what that means. I didn't have a, a suggestion, but I think we need a definition for that.
Don't we have a whole separate ordinance that's not in the U D O for special events?
We do, yeah.
Is, I'm sorry, say again?
We have a whole separate ordinance that's not in the U D O for special events. There's a whole separate permitting process and, but it's in the table of uses, right? I, I just wanted to note that.
Yeah, so do, do we have to define it, I'm, I'm just saying here in the appendix for.
I can pull the one that's in chapter twenty-five.
Okay.
And slap that into the U D O.
And we're okay with that, maybe we look at that would be a suggestion. Moving on to page one eighty-five, almost done, uh, wall. Should this be named wall screening? If it is to be defined separately, is it, is the intent of it to provide screening? I know, um, we've been, there've been quite a few issues with the town on walls, per se. So, uh, is there any, do you have any sugge, are, are we okay on the definition of a wall now, Matt? From a staff and a planning perspective, or do you still have issues come up where we need to look at this more? Would be, let me phrase the question a different way.
Yeah, the current definitions and regulations are put in place, I think, to address some of the past issues that we've had, and to my knowledge, we haven't had them since.
Okay. Fair enough.
I think it's doing what we're intending to do right now.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Mr. Chair, that's all I had.
Very good.
And it was enough, I'm sorry.
Melanie?
Well, I, between bar, brew pub, and nightclub, um, I just thought we needed to clarify that. In my opinion, a bar serves alcohol, it may or may not serve food. It may or may not provide music for entertainment and dancing. A brew pub produces alcohol. Maybe onsite, maybe not onsite, um, and serves it, may or may not serve. not serve food, may or may not provide music for entertainment and dancing. And then nightclub serves alcohol, may or may not provide music for entertainment and dancing, but usually doesn't serve food. So in my opinion, producing the alcohol is what makes a brew pub different. Not serving food is what makes a nightclub different. They all serve alcohol, and, you know, music and dancing can occur anywhere.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just point to, so I know in Southport, you've got a couple of establishments where you pay a $2 annual fee, and you can go in and drink, and, you know, so in that case, is that a club, and then regulated under the club thing, or is that going to be a bar? Because they don't serve food, now that, they could, obviously, or is that a bar when you have that kind of-
Technically, a private club.
So it would be regulated under a private club, not even the definition of a bar?
Yeah, and so some of this boils down to, and I'm not an expert on them, I can look into them for sure, the alcohol licensing laws, because there's plenty of restaurants that serve food, but the alcohol is not their, is not the predominant, you know, sale onsite. I can definitely look into some of what those thresholds are, and come back to you to-
Typically, restaurants have a food alcohol percentage.
That's right, yeah. Because, yeah, if you, if you have this definition here that a bar serves alcohol and may or may not serves food, and may or may not provide music for entertainment or dancing, well, a restaurant that serves alcohol is now a bar and not a restaurant. So we need to figure out that.
I would look at state statute and the alcohol regulations, because there is a difference on their license, and that's how they're determined as far as definitions.
And we, Mike could just reference back to their license or something, Matt.
Yeah, and just mimic what the license is as determined for the definition. Very good. Go ahead.
And then, as I said before, I just was going to suggest that in the definition of hotel, we indicate that the rooms are rented out individually, and so I guess in my mind, that would mean if you had less than 14 rooms in your boarding house that you rented out, then you're still a boarding house, is that-
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to compare the boarding house, bed and breakfast, and hotel definitions to figure out a delineation for those.
Yeah, and, and maybe just pointing out that the rooms are rented out individually would differentiate that from the single-family residence that is rented out for short-term rentals. I mean, it, it's really not going to change anything, it might just clear up a little confusion with what people are reading and how they're interpreting that. And then I had questioned observation tower, can you not have a private one? But, and as far as the light trespass, you know, to me, light trespass is light trespass, and it doesn't have to be oceanfront during turtle season. I think we need to define it and not limit it to oceanfront and turtle season. Reasonable accommodations, you get back to that definition, because-
Melanie, clarification?
Mm-hmm.
So oceanfront light trespass, and then there's what would be deemed, I guess, non-oceanfront light trespass.
I mean, to me, it shouldn't-
Are you thinking there's just one, there should not be any?
I mean, it is what it is, regardless of where it's located and what time of year it is.
I ask that because I know they'll come up and ask me on the beach to close my curtains. So they consider just the lighting on the inside of my house, I don't have any outdoor lighting, but they'll ask me to come in and actually close my curtains, because the light that comes out of my living room actually is light trespass to them. So that's why I think there might be a distinction here that we might want to make.
Maybe it has to be outdoor lighting.
Or something, but anyway, I'm sorry.
So, just to clarify, could we say outdoor light pollution?
Light trespass, yeah.
Or trespass?
I can look into some, let me-
Crossing the border.
Let me see if I can pull some, some definitions for you guys to look at for that.
I don't love outdoor lighting. Can you explain the reasonable accommodations definition?
Just looking at, and no, I cannot. So I've never used that definition here in the ordinance. I can certainly look into it and see where it came from and what we're trying to accomplish with that. It may be something that's in there for, I mean, it references variances, it may be something that's in there for the Board of Adjustment if somebody's coming in and asking for a variance. We do have some ordinance language that deals with someone seeking a reasonable accommodation for a disability, and we've, the board's used that for somebody who needs to install an elevator on a residential property that might need to go into the side setback. But let me, let me look into that a little bit for you, because like I said, I've never used that definition in the ordinance, so.
I mean, I just think reasonable accommodations could be for making something ADA compliant, it could, it could also be a lot of things.
It's really almost something we don't necessarily need to define, because that's why we have, so like, we don't define what a hardship on a property is, because that's what the Board of Adjustment does. They come in and hear your evidence and say, okay, that's a reasonable accommodation, or that's a hardship on the property based on that testimony. So really, if we have a definition for it, it might limit the ways in which they could do their job and make that determination. But I'll look into it a little bit more for you. That's the first time I've seen that thing. Never even looked at.
Well, confusing.
I guess it's good that it hasn't come up.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Very good. We have a copy of David's notes here, and I think the majority, the majority of these bed and breakfast, again, he said must define commercial recreation establishment, does not include indoor, does not include indoor as well. Ground disturbing activity gives a lot of freedom to utility companies, arena, two boats. I cannot read that.
Mr. Chair, I think, without Mr. Perser here to explain his-
Let's skip his and let him-
He'll have to-
Talk about that when he gets back.
I agree, because I didn't understand either.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are, my notes were pretty much covered by everybody else. I'm not going to take the time to go into that. So that puts us down to- Changing the planning board meeting dates, correct?
Mr. Chair, can I just bring up a couple?
Yes.
I don't have a lot, but just a couple of things I noted. On page 61, under official maps and plans, reference to city, and I think should be updated to town, town council instead of city council. Good catch. And then on page 75, it referenced city manager instead of town manager. And then I missed on page 74, under temporary emergency construction or repair residence, there's a couple letters there that I don't know are supposed to be there in the beginning.
I'm sorry, what page was that again, please?
That was 74, for temporary emergency.
And then on page 76, vacation rental agreement, it speaks to a landlord or his or her real estate broker. I would think that the owner should be in there, because it could be directly between the owner and not-
A third party.
And then the last thing, I wanted to just make a comment on, Melanie, your notes where you talked about hotel. The only confusion I would have in some of that language is we have a lot of short-term rentals that they aren't doing the whole house, they're just doing a room within their house. So I don't know how we, you know, don't classify it, so someone that's just doing a room isn't being looked at as also a short-term rental, so just considering that.
Yeah, I think that's our avenue, i- if the town decides they want to regulate short-term rentals, I think that's the avenue that we still have some, some leeway to take. What we would need to do there is define these short-term rentals, and then come up with the regulations, not just the regulations, but also what you're going to be asked to do is decide what zoning districts they're appropriate in.
Right.
So I could envision that being a pretty, pretty big ball of wax to deal with there. But definitely, like, you know, it sounds like there's interest on the board to see if we can tackle that for sure.
I think so.
Any more?
Yeah, I have one more. On page 30, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but 7.32 speaks to auto, watercraft, recreational vehicle sales, rental, and indoor repairs. We are under 7.32.1 adding about the fencing, but it looks like that's only applied to vehicles or watercrafts being repaired. If we have sales and other things going on, are we only going to require screening for the repairs, or are we going to?
Yeah.
It, it speaks to the automo, all the automotive stuff that we talked about. We, we need to get our arms around that from a use perspective. And I think, Matt, is in alignment with trying to clean that up a little bit, so, yeah.
The trick you run into there, because we could separate, you know, the sales of these things versus the repair of these things, as two separate uses, but a lot of times, you, if you have a dealership, they're also providing repair services for that. So that type of combination of those two things, that's definitely something we'll be working through as we go through this. If you, if you are running a dealership and providing services there, I definitely could see where you would not want to have the vehicles that are for sale screened from public view, because we've all ridden by a dealership and said, I really like that car, and maybe I would go check it out the other day.
The front, but the sides you could.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah. I think it's, depending on where, and like, is it being conditioned for sale, you know, when they get them off the truck, and they're not driving them right out front, they got to do some work to them first.
But with the recreational vehicle sales, would that include golf cart sales?
Yes.
It would depend on how RVs are defined in our ordinance. RV, or golf carts are typically defined as a low-speed vehicle versus an RV. An RV is a place that has sleeping accommodations and things like that.
Because my concern would be to make sure we're covering, like the low-speed vehicle sales.
Yes.
I mean, we currently have some that are good about daytime, they're out front, and they're behind screen at nighttime, and then we have others that aren't, so.
Yeah, we have low-speed vehicles, sales elsewhere in the ordinance, has its own particular thing, I believe.
I wouldn't want to give it out, because it might get stolen.
For sure. Can I call a five-minute break, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, Carrie has to go for an appointment. Can I make a motion for her to be excused?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in recess. We're back in session. Next topic for agenda is the date for the board meetings. We've had a request to look at changing to the first Tuesday of the month.
You know, I'll cover what this was about for the benefit of our new members. So when you look at the calendar schedule of meetings, the, the planning board meets on the, the third week of the month, and town council meets on the second. What that means is a couple of things. If you guys make a recommendation on a zoning map or a text amendment, the town's required to meet certain advertising requirements for that hearing at town council. There's a lot of times where it lines up where you guys make a recommendation on Thursday, and I have to have an advertisement into the paper on Friday to make sure that we meet those advertisement requirements, and, and we do that, but it does create kind of a tight timetable for advertisements. The other thing it does is makes it so that if you guys make a recommendation, you're not seeing, potentially not seeing the minutes for that until after a council has reviewed your recommendation, because you're not meeting it again until after council has, has heard that item. And it doesn't really give citizens and applicants much time to prepare for that council meeting, because there's a lot of times where it's only two and a half or three weeks between planning board reviewing something and council having to hear it. What we recommended, and it's really just a recommendation, I wanted to start a discussion on it, was potentially moving from the, the third week of the month to the first. The benefit of that is we can make sure, we have more time to properly advertise things, more time for staff to prepare, to make sure that what we're giving council is in line with what y'all recommended, and there's more review time in there, more time for applicants and citizens to get ready for that public hearing when the decision's actually made. You know, if there's stuff that the people brought up to the planning board, they may want to kind of reinforce that. The, the drawback is that it would take a couple of extra weeks for stuff that y'all do to make it to town council. So if you moved it to the, let's say y'all made it, you met in the first week of the month and made a decision to recommend something, it couldn't go to that very next council meeting the next week. It would have to wait till the next month's council meeting. So that would be about a two-week gap that we don't have now, between things happening now. Certainly, if you're trying to afford stuff quickly, that, you know, adds that timetable. If you take the opposite stance of, oh, that gives people more time to prepare for that hearing, definitely a cost and a benefit there, you know, however you weigh it out. I did speak to, to Ms. McCullough, I don't want to represent her, but she was worried about the, the number of holidays on the, the first week of the month. Usually, you might have a holiday at either the end of one month or the beginning of the next. We had a, last month, you guys asked for a calendar, so we kind of did one with all of the major holidays, as well as a potential planning board meeting on the first Tuesday. So just any feedback you have, if you want to keep it like it is, I mean, it's, it's been working, but in my experience, it's, everywhere I've worked in the past, the planning board meets before the town council. But, you know, like I said, where we're at now is essentially the tightest possible timeframe that the town can use to set up these meetings, so.
For your 30-day notice requirement, if we were to meet before town council, it still doesn't give you that time to, for the notification before the next, it's always going to be that, so, so there's always going to be that delay.
That's-
The other point that you raised around the minutes, not being able to see the minutes, does that always have to come, I mean, if we move it to a different schedule, I'm, I'm not sure, and the only reason why I'm not sure about the first week is just because it does hit a number of those holidays.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're going to, I think if we want a quorum, or if we want participation, it's not even our attendance, it's, that's not a great week for prepping for and being prepared to come in here and make the most of the meeting. So that's my concern with that. What is the first Tuesday? So that's my concern with that. What is the first Tuesday? The only, and of course you threw out your schedule, which is difficult enough too, but is that the only option for us to move it from that third Thursday to?
No.
Is there another suitable that could still address some of the issues, but not burden what has to happen for us all to get these packets?
Yeah. So the, the first week of the month, it provides the most benefit in my opinion, uh, because it does, um, it, it does help out with that timeframe. The, uh, environmental advisory committee meets on the first Thursday, um, and one of my staff members is the lia- liaison to that board. So I wouldn't want to do it on the first Thursday because of that meeting. If one of us is out of the office and we don't have coverage for both meetings, that would be problematic. But really, uh, if we moved it back at all, you still get some of those benefits that I mentioned. I wouldn't do the first Monday because there's, you could have, you could have the first Monday.
Those are the holidays.
Yeah. And the first Monday could be the same week as the second Tuesday, depending on how the calendar falls. So that, that's probably not a, a, a good day to have it, to have planning board and then council the next day. And like I said, we, we can leave it as is. It's, it's been working. Um, so if you guys want to take some time to digest it, I mean, obviously, Carrie's not here to, to give her own representation. So.
What about the second Thursday? And then, I mean, we're purposely putting it in the same week as a council meeting, but sometimes it falls in the same week as a council meeting anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not like it's the day before or the day after.
Yeah. The, the only thing is if you make it after council, um, you lose that potential benefit of looking at your last meeting's minutes before council actually makes their, uh, decision on something. So.
Yeah, that's what it'd be the same way it is now.
Yeah, that's right.
So the, the, we would see it because then they, they wouldn't be getting anything that we would have voted on until the next. Cause the minutes I thought came out typically right now, because I was asking about the packet.
Yeah.
So we have a Thursday meeting today. The idea is to get the packet out the Thursday before, Thursday or Friday, the week before. So if we're meeting on that Thursday before, we would get the minutes before the town council.
You would see the draft minutes, you know, the dra- the minutes aren't official until you've adopted them. So.
Okay, but.
But what I don't want to have happen is, you know, something be in the draft minutes, uh, you know, maybe we're up in council, you know, talking about what the planning board recommended or didn't recommend. And then at the, the planning board meeting, a planning board member bring up that they thought that something that was represented in the minutes was, was incorrect.
Does that happen?
Yeah, I, I mean, y'all don't change your minutes a whole lot, but I mean, usually there's a, a couple of things in there that, uh, the board has feedback on for their minutes. It really reinforces, you know, say, uh, council wants to know, well, what did the planning board say about this when they deliberated? If you guys have approved your minutes, we can literally provide that to them and say, hey, here's the discussion on the approved minutes. When the planning board reviewed it. And I mean, we do have video and stuff like that, so it's not like it's impossible for them to see your deliberation on a thing.
Is Monday a bad day for? I mean, are Tuesdays and Thursdays your preferable days for these types? Because we moved it from a Thursday to a Tuesday. I just didn't know. Like if we moved it to the.
Tuesday's probably better.
A Tuesday's better?
Yeah, but we can't do the second Tuesday because that's the actual council meeting.
I mean, as far as holidays, I mean, if we had an upcoming meeting where we thought there was going to be interference there, we could always reschedule it, which we've, we've done a few times.
Looking at the calendar, there's quite a few holidays around the first week.
Yeah.
Quite a few. And we would be constantly rescheduling.
Do we want to do the end of the month?
Would the end, the fourth week?
We'll hit all those holidays this year. Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Although that's the end of the month.
You're gonna hit all of them.
We just keeping it as is, it's probably going to be our best.
Yeah.
Route of.
Absolutely.
Continue on doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
All right. We good?
Yes, that's fine.
Very good.
And if we work out some kinks and, and we can always revisit changing that schedule map too, if we can work out some of those smaller kinks. So.
And we can, you know, you guys adopt a, a meeting schedule, right, Lisa?
No, it's just the schedule it is unless they change it.
Yeah. Maybe what we can do is in December, you know, say, hey, here's the calendar dates. Here's, you know, an alternative and let you guys decide, you know, what works and what doesn't.
One more question.
Yeah.
I know there's only four of us here, but we need, or five, I'm sorry. We need to probably get one more work session in on this U D O ASAP. So can we all look at our calendars?
So this would be. This would be before the twenty-first, which is our next meeting in March.
Yes. It will be before the twenty-first. Let me get to mine. So we're on February, go into March. Lisa, what's your schedule look like the week of the fourth?
I'm getting there.
I'm out of, I'm on vacation that week and I apologize. The next week, I'm flexible and obviously.
Lisa, what's the best time for you, the first or second week?
Of March?
Yeah.
I don't have anything. I, I have a committee meeting, um, that I would like to attend on Wednesday afternoon at two of the twenty, no, that's the twenty-eighth. Never mind. Yeah, no, I don't have anything other than the council meeting on the twelfth.
Could we do Tuesday, March fifth? Wait. Oh, you're going to be out of town. I'm sorry.
Are you gone that whole week? Girl?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's my one week this year.
About like, uh, the twenty-sixth of this month or the twenty-ninth?
How, could we do March first, Friday?
No.
No.
Sorry.
Girl?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm reading the space.
I'm so sorry. I truly did not think these meetings would change that fast, so I apologize.
Yeah, the room is booked for something else on March first anyway.
Okay.
Um, what about the fourteenth?
That's a, okay.
Yep. Thirteenth, fourteenth, I can do that.
Fourteenth would be better.
Let's do the fourteenth. And how early can we do that, Lisa? Nine? All right. I've got it. Everybody good for the fourteenth? And the primary topic will be, uh, finishing up this. Can you bring me?
Now, we'll say the, how much time do you guys want to review your packet for that one? Because the more time you give me, the more I can write between now and then.
Okay.
So if you're good with publishing the packet.
The better.
If you're good with me publishing the packet on the Monday, on the eleventh, that's Monday, um, that would give me a little bit of extra time to get that done and reviewed, uh, and.
Jean, is the fourteenth good for you? The fourteenth of March, is that good for you?
Good for me.
Yes.
Yeah, he nodded and said.
Okay, thank you.
I'll text David.
Text him. Thank you. Okay, thumbs up. We're good. We're set.
Great.
And that will be reviewing what we talked about today and going forward on supplemental.
Yeah, um, well, what I think we should do for that one is probably, uh, knock out the last chunk of supplemental regulations that we, we haven't built yet.
Yeah.
We can do that. And then what I'll do from there, uh, is, uh, put everything together that you've recommended so far. Hopefully that'll be the last chunk that we have to review. And then we'll have, uh, everything together for you to make a recommendation on, uh, going forward. And then, so that'll, any of the notes or things y'all wanted to change in these meetings, that would be incorporated into that final draft for your recommendation. So.
Can you do the, uh, house size, square footage we was talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
With those buffers too, you were gonna send, okay.
Yeah, I can, I can send that regularly.
I got the thumbs up from David P.
Oh, good.
Okay, Chairman, if there could be a motion to, um, schedule a special meeting for March fourteenth at nine AM with the purpose of continuing review of table uses and supplemental regulations.
I moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Matt. Okay, the final business sign ordinance.
Yeah. Get us going with that. For our new members, uh, we discussed last month, uh, the town does not have any regulations specifically referencing whether a sign is off-premise or on-premise. So what's the difference? An on-premise sign is one that is advertising a business that's on the same location as the sign. Uh, off-premise are those that, you know, you might, people typically attribute them to billboards where it says, hey, two miles on the left, there's a McDonald's. Go check that out. It's something that as the town develops and especially as the two eleven corridor develops, you know, something that's gonna potentially rear its head going down the line. So we talked last month about, you know, whether there was appetite with the board to, uh, look at options as ways we could regulate those things going forward so that we're not flat-footed. I've worked up a few potential ways that we could look at it, uh, and I'll kind of walk you through those. In your agenda packet, there's also some, uh, consideration from our adopted plans. First is the comprehensive land use plan. And then, uh, section ten point two-two, that's the purpose and intent statement of the sign regulations. So that, those are two things that you want to try to be consistent with whenever you make a recommendation. So a few strategies we could use, uh, the first one is from a regulatory standpoint, the simplest one. And that's to include permanent off-premise commercial signs in the list of prohibited signs. You'd say, hey, this is just something we don't want to allow in the town. We're gonna enumerate it in the ordinance. We do have a few in the town already. So, uh, if you chose that option, um, what happens is they become legal non-conformities. You know, they're allowed to stay there. They don't have to come tear them down, but if a hurricane comes over and destroys it completely, they won't be able to put it back up.
They can maintain it though.
You can maintain it up to fifty percent of the value of the structure. And even if it's damaged up to fifty percent of the value of the structure, you could, you could repair it to that amount. The, the, the second way we could look at this, um, is to, uh, limit the size of column or pole signs in the commercial districts of the town. Our comprehensive land use plan advocates for, uh, a twelve-foot height for signs in the town. I didn't go that far because the C L D is a more automotive oriented development pattern where you do typically see a little bit larger signs. So I kind of split the difference a little bit.
These are off-premises still that we're talking about?
Well, this, this will be any sign if you took this tack. But what it does is it makes off-premise sign less attractive to people because if you're limited in the height and the square footage, you're less likely to actually go through the, the exercise of even installing an off-premise sign. And if you do do one, it's going to be less visually intrusive because it is smaller in scope, uh, than what we allow currently. And, and like I said, that one, limiting the size had some direct, uh, you know, something in the comprehensive plan that I could, you know, point specifically to and say, okay, this is, this is kind of, this is pretty consistent with what our comprehensive land use plan says. The last one, uh, would be to develop a, a highway overlay district. This is pretty common in towns that have highway jurisdiction running through them where you might, uh, limit what can go in those areas within a certain distance. You essentially create a buffer off of that, um, that highway. And you either, and you can go either way. You could allow more or less. You know, some places in the highway overlay district, you allow more signs, but, or, or bigger signs because it's people moving through with, with traffic, you know, with velocity. I'm sorry, just didn't pull it up. I created a map that didn't export correctly for you guys. That should show a, a example of what we could do, which would be like a four-hundred-foot buffer, um, essentially off of two eleven in Middleton where we don't have these signs currently and say, okay, in these areas, we don't want any new off-premise signs. And the idea there would be to kind of protect those corridors, um, versus that, that sign installation. We do unfortunately have a, one or two on Long Beach. So I didn't really think about including that just because the idea here would be to, to target areas where we don't have them. So we're not creating a legal non-conformity if we limit those signs in those areas. So you kind of, you get the benefit without running into the, the potential problem of a, a non-conforming situation. But once again, this is, uh, I'm not asking you for a recommendation at this time. I'm really asking discussion and feedback, you know, do any of these make sense? Is there something else we could do? You know, you could even just say that, uh, off-premise signs are specifically limited in the C L D zoning district. You could get that granular with it if you wanted to. But something I wanted to present to you guys and see what kind of feedback we got back before we came forward with a formal recommendation for you. So if anybody has questions or comments.
Could we do a combination map? Do an overlay for Middleton, two eleven, and then do a sign requirements size-wise?
Yeah, you could do, you could come on and do both. Absolutely.
I think that would be our smartest where we're not creating non-conforming, but yet it's allowed with limitations.
Yeah, what I'll do, i- if that's the tack we want to take, um, what I'll probably do is go out to, um, the Lowe's Foods out there and take a, a measurement of those signs so that we make sure that, that, you know, if we limit those sign sizes, I don't want to create an issue for an existing sign for a, a business park that's not really causing us any issues currently. So.
Okay, go ahead.
Is the notion of grandfathering a legitimate notion, uh, when it comes to zoning? Because.
So we don't use that.
I don't like the non-conforming, I, I, while I don't like designating something as non-conforming, I don't, I, I feel completely hamstrung in being able to then, you can't change it without having two signs, in this case, only two. Now, if it was fifteen, that's a different story, but you'd love to be able to maybe grandfather, but go ahead.
Yeah, um, grandfathering is just a term that we don't use anymore. What it mean, what it refers to is a legal non-conformity. It's the same thing.
But it would give them the ability to rebuild it if it was damaged beyond fifty percent of the value.
Uh, you could amend the legal non-conformity section of the ordinance to do something like that. For example, we do that with single-family residences. Here in the town, uh, single-family residences aren't limited in a percentage of damage to be reestablished. So if your house, for whatever reason, is non-conforming with the zoning ordinance and a hurricane blows it down, you can build it back just like it was because there's no limit on the value there. You could do something similar with signage, uh, if you were so inclined, um, to do. Yeah, sure.
Jump in.
Yes.
You know, quite a few people in our town have expressed, uh, concerns about the appearance of the corridors to the island. And there are just a very, very many multitude of options for advertising your business. I would be happy to not allow a off-premise sign. What, what is the point of that? There's ten thousand other ways to advertise your business.
That's just one way they chose to advertise.
Yeah.
And if a private landowner has land that adjoins a highway, that's what we're getting into is.
And, because that's a moneymaker for them potentially to rent that space.
And I, I definitely, uh, personally, maybe not professionally, personally, I agree with you. You know, I don't, if I need to find somewhere, Google it and Google Maps takes me there and that, that's how life is now.
Yeah, and this time the options are.
I do know that in conversations with small business owners, they do still put a premium on. a premium on, on having signage and having that visual thing out there.
I mean, having a sign at, at your place of business, obviously. Having it on the other side of town on somebody's property, it's really hard for me to fight for that.
No, I get it, I get it 100%, I understand.
It actually works. So while we, while our choice is, we don't want a ton of signage on the side of the roads. I understand that it's a distraction to the natural beauty that we have, but if we already have commercial areas up and down a road, and there's already signage there, let's limit what's going to be put up and protect what hasn't been disturbed yet. That make sense?
So we would be basically making those nonconforming, but again, I like the notion of grandfathering, some, something that's there when we change it so that they're not burdened by a change in the zoning, however that term should be phrased, but then limiting them going forward. I definitely agree, Middleton, we do not want to see Middleton turn into a billboard highway, I mean, that's the last thing we want, that's a beautiful stretch of land, I mean roadway, so.
One more question, Matt. What about if a sign goes into disarray? What recourse does the town have to remedy the situation?
If the sign's like damaged in some way and the owner hasn't repaired it, unless it's like unsafe in some way, you know, we could potentially view it as a nuisance or something like that to, to pursue code enforcement on it. But we'd have to take a look and see what the conditions are out there for sure to know when we're not, I mean, if it's blown down and it's completely gone, you know, unless the debris's still there.
In that vein, there are still signs up for, I know one in particular for Marina that doesn't exist in our, in our whole development, that doesn't even exist and hasn't existed for three or four years. So to me, if it's advertising something that doesn't exist, I think it would fall into the category you're talking about.
But we can't, we can't regulate the sign based on what it says, and that, to your point.
So even for a business, we can't, we can't determine that it can't be an advertisement for us, for a business that does not exist.
No, no, because that's content-based regulation. If I have, the only avenue, there's only a couple of avenues left that local jurisdictions can regulate signs on based on their content. One is commercial versus residential, one is, or commercial versus non-commercial, I guess I should say, speech, and the other is on and off-premise signage. The rest of the content-based regulations were struck down by the Supreme Court a couple of years ago, and it really hamstring a lot of towns, because a lot of towns had regulations just like that, they're like, oh, if it's for this type of business, this is allowed, but we can't, we, you run into First Amendment speech problems there, if I have to go out and read what the sign says to determine how to regulate it, yeah.
So with any other discussion, what's your viewpoint?
The only thought I had, I mean, being that this is something we're going to be working on, we recently formed, or the town did, a Business Advisory Committee, what about reaching to them just to get any input or thoughts that they might have before we make a decision on this?
Yeah, I've, I've been in pretty constant contact with Hallie, our Economic Development Coordinator with the town, yeah, for, for just that reason. Yeah, we want to make sure that whatever we propose, we bring them in to be part of the discussion one way or another, so, because we also don't want to blindside it, right?
Schedule that for the next.
Yeah. I'll meet with them, or get Hallie what we've been looking at for feedback from them as well. Yeah, absolutely. But it sounds like everybody, that there's a tendency among the people that are here towards something like an overlay district and potentially reducing the size of signage as well, is that, am I reading the room? I see some nods.
Can you bring us a suggested format for us to look and discuss?
Yeah, absolutely. Be happy to do that.
And again, for those of us still learning, the overlay is for the off-premises, the on-premises, because we can have that, I think that's where the Business Advisory will really have some feedback on that one.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's two different.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's questioning that. If I go up to a business and there's no sign there, I'm probably not knocking on the door. It's a little strange.
Okay, we are down to board reports, correct? I'll let you start.
I don't have anything to add, other than I'm glad to be here and look forward to working with you all.
Well, I would say welcome to our two new members, we're very happy you're here, and we look forward to working with you. And I'll just mention that I did reach out to Steve regarding the retaining wall and fill issues, and he and I have had a couple of conversations. I don't think I've worked everything out in my head, it's really complicated and a lot to understand, but I'm going to continue working on that, just to try to get it sorted out to where everybody, you know, most can be happy with it, I won't say anybody.
No one's ever all happy with planning, that's just how it is.
I'm delighted to be on the planning board, obviously, you saw in the fall I committed to try and help the town as much as I can while I've still got the energy and, and all that. I will say, and I hope you'll all indulge me, I think I'm one of the few true beachfront owners that sits on either town council or the planning board, and, and I do think that there are some real issues that residents on the beach, I think we constantly want to encourage people to buy for themselves on the beach, not just begin to cede our beach to the rental market. And so I hope, I, I hope to bring some of those issues up, and I hope you guys will give those real thought for how we can make it a little bit easier for, not easier, a better living experience for someone who lives oceanfront, to encourage more of that.
Or second row.
And you, and you hear the same thing, that's all right, you do get the same issues.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for participation. I think today's meeting went very well, and I appreciate everyone's input. For homework, I would like for each of us to look at sign regs, just so that when Matt brings that to us, we have a little bit of understanding for his direction, and we'll have some questions for him.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But the next meeting is going to be really talking about.
The UDO.
Definitions and UDO.
Signs will be the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Matt, you've got some staff report?
Yeah, just your regular staff report with the items that are kind of in limbo for town council, no changes there, though. I will prep you guys that, as you know, I've been trying to get the ball rolling on updating the comprehensive land use plan. We've gotten some responses from our RFP. Now, we're trying to get times for everyone to come talk to council to see which respondent. We got some really good quality responses from that, too, so that's super encouraging. That's, that's a big lift for everybody involved, but there's also lots of opportunities for members of the public to come and give their feedback about, you know, what kind of town we want to have in the next 20, 30 years, and set up some strategies for how we can accomplish that goal going forward. So it's really exciting time for the town and planning efforts, even while we're doing the, you know, the hard grind of setting up the regulations, that's going to be a big opportunity for us, too, so strap in and be ready to do even more work. So thank, welcome, new guys, we got some work for you guys to do.
Fresh meat, sort of.
That's all I've got for you today.
We do have a thing for items awaiting town council?
That's just information report.
Okay, yeah, that's just something we've been updating in your packet regularly.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We're adjourned.